I would like to call the Marmel City Council to meeting. My name's Rick Anderson and I'm gonna be filling in for the mayor who is absent for this meeting. First business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I've asked council member Vapurzant to lead us in that.
Father, we love you. Thank you for a wonderful day. Thank you for your provision for this day, and we're totally unaware most of the time of how you protect us and how you provide for us. You've given us a free nation because of those who have gone before us and those who are protecting us even now, and oftentimes we're unaware of it. Unaware of how perhaps while we're driving, you protect us, our children, or those who we love the most, and you're so good to us, and you're a wonderful God, and we want to thank you this evening for being good to us. Bless the mayor as he's away. Give him safety. I pray that you bless council member Anderson as he leads this evening. Help us to make wise decisions. Bless our military and our uniformed personnel that every day give of themselves and are willing to sacrifice their all so that we can live in freedom. And on a side note, we do pray for the Hogs tomorrow night. You would bless them and help them to have an astounding victory, and we will be most thankful for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next order of business is special guests and announcements. We do not have any special guests and announcements, so the next one is approval for the minutes from our June 4th meeting.
Move to approve?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Or no? Okay, motion passes. The next business is public comment. We don't have any public comment that I'm aware of, no. So we move on to the next order of business, which is financial statement review. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Vega to come up and give that. Thank you.
Good evening. So we're gonna look at the April financial statements for 2018. On the first slide, you can see that our cash position is doing well. Our sanitation fund is above our budgeted amount as with all of our funds, and, well, Streets isn't. Streets is just a little below. The next page. This is our revenue from the general fund, and as you can see in this chart, our county millage is up 5% that we've collected to date over prior year. The city sales tax is up 24% of collection over prior year, and our franchise fees are up 4% over prior year. The next chart is of our street fund. Our state turnback is down 6% compared to prior year. Our street aid is up 7% over prior year, and our county millage collections are up 3% compared to last year at this time. Sanitation fees are up 4% over prior year. General fund expenses, police and fire are above prior year, and this is due to increases in the uniform employees' pay and the corresponding increase with law fee. And the new senior citizen center, their expenses are up over prior year, and this is due to the center, the new senior center opening late in the year, later in the year. And this pie chart just shows the same information of our general fund, and what you can take away with this is that the bulk of our general fund expenditures are on police and fire. Street fund expenditures for May. The operating, other operating expenses, the variance here over prior year is due to a third entrance expense of $76,000 that we're waiting on reimbursement for. Also, our vehicle maintenance was up $15,000 compared to prior year, and the increase in fuel cost is also part of that number. And 2017 did not have May fuel allocations, and it was only done through April. And I know I bring this up every month, and that it was corrected in later months, but it was not corrected until July when I came onboard. Sanitation expenses, the same with those operating expenses. There are an increase of $6,000 due to increased tipping fees, the increase in fuel costs, and again, the allocation of April fuel expenses through, or only through April in 2017 makes up that variance. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Scott.
The state turnback being down 6%, is that just timing?
I am not sure if that's timing or not.
What's the dollar figure on that, Ms. Vega? Do you know?
The dollar figure of what it's down?
Yeah, just approximately.
It's in your financials.
Yeah. I didn't pay that much attention to it until I saw the graph.
Right. It's down 6%, and...
That's okay. I can, I can, I can look that up.
Well, see, in some of these different numbers, the 6% could be $2,000, or it could be $20,000, depending on what, what line item that we're looking at.
State turnback, it looks like it's 22,656. That's not as horrible as it could be.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Mosley?
I was watching the video. I wasn't at the last meeting. Somebody asked Mr. Kraft when the next audit report would be. This one here, first meeting in June, and I couldn't make out for sure what he said, but I think I understood him to say that it would be about this time again next year for the 2017.
Oh, no, no, no. No, they're coming out July 2nd to finish their fieldwork. They'll be here for two weeks, and then, once they complete their fieldwork, then we'll be into actually writing the report. You know, it's tied up to their availability to review the report, and I know, like, the reason they couldn't get out here until July is because they have audits that are out of town, and so that's why they couldn't get in sooner.
When do you anticipate that the final audit would be for 2017? When do you see him taking his hand delivery?
I really don't know.
We kind of asked him that, too, councilmember, and he kinda...
He hedged.
Yeah, he didn't really give us a...
That was my problem, is I thought, he's hedging or what is he saying?
Yeah, and I think he's, he's trying to anticipate, maybe he would, he's already got so many projects in a row. That was the way that I wrote, read it.
It could be spring, is that right?
I really, no, 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 no. No.
We're not gonna...
Spring of next year.
He means spring of next year. No. What I, what I would say, and I, you know, I don't have them giving me an answer, but I don't think it would be beyond the end of August. Now, that's, I'm speaking...
The way we want to see it, right?
Yeah, I'm speaking of, like, in a month.
Okay, so you'll have...
Six weeks.
...your portion of the report done, is that correct?
My portion of the report will be done before the end of July.
All right, all right.
Yeah, when they're here, I'll be writing the report. It's a big, it's a big report to prepare, and then they, they dive deep in it, you know? So it, I think our turnaround last, last time was four weeks.
All right.
And I would, I would expect it to take the same amount of time. So that would put us on a six-week...
All right.
After, after July 2nd.
Thank you. What about, how are your staffing needs and accounting? At one time, you were just, nobody could go on vacation and some things like that.
That's not the case. Actually, this week Vanessa's on vacation, and next week Mary will be on vacation.
So are you happy with the size of your department at this point?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. That's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. If we have no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion to... We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
All, all opposed, say no. Motion passes. The next item is departmental reports, and that's done at the first meeting of each month. Our next item is procedural motion. We need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and...
To Walfrid.
Thank you. It's been motion and second to read all resolutions and ordinance by title only. All in favor, say aye, yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next is unfinished business. We have the second reading of ordinance 956. Madam City Clerk, will you read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 956, and ordinance amending chapter 62 of the Marmel City Code to account for changes in billing and collection of the solid waste collection fee, removal of a criminal penalty for non-payment, authorizing the mayor to enter into a billing service agreement with Central Arkansas Water and for other purposes.
So that will be on third reading at the next meeting. Do we have any questions or discussion on this? Oh, councilmember Mosley?
I had a question. I may have missed it when I was reading through this, but will CAW be able to turn off somebody's water if they do not pay their garbage bill with us?
That was, that was the impression that I got.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk?
If I can answer that.
Oh, okay.
So that isn't part of our agreement, but it's my understanding that what they do is they, if someone pays, first of all, if someone doesn't make a payment at all, they're gonna shut off the water for them not paying their water bill. If someone say their bill came to $100 and then the sanitation fee was 15, if they only mailed in $100 instead of 115, then the 15 for the sanitation fee gets paid first, and then it shows that they paid $85 of their water bill. And so how CAW enforces that is gonna be consistent with the way they would enforce if someone didn't pay their entire water bill.
All right, so payments are applied to other things first with water applied last.
I can't say about other things. My, my understanding is that with regards to the community service fee that we've negotiated with them, that that will be applied, any payments made will be applied to that first, is my understanding.
All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. All right, so the next order of business is second reading for ordinance 957. City...
Thank you, Councilmember.
City Clerk, please.
Pro Tim. Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 957, and ordinance amending the Marmel land use plan and map and for other purposes.
This will also be on third reading at the next scheduled council meeting. Do we have any discussion? Oh, yeah, we have. Councilmember Mosley?
You're doing well up there, thank you, by the way.
Thank you. Not used to watching them.
Is the developer by any chance in the audience tonight? Could I ask you a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
All righty.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Darryl Brock, 18 South Shore, Conway, Arkansas.
All righty. Yeah, I wasn't here at the last meeting, otherwise I would've asked you then, but, yeah, I guess your, your idea is to build some single-family homes, smaller ones, I guess, and fairly close together and so on and so forth.
Basically, the same thing as chalets, a country club.
Chalet, country club.
Yeah, the one we just done last year.
Okay.
Off of Country Club Parkway.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Now, the zoning of this, it's gonna be PRD, which would also allow apartments and that sort of thing. Is there, when would you actually commence building these houses? Is this something you're prepared to be coming back in front of the planning department to bring your, your plans and that sort of thing?
Yeah, as soon as we get approval, Eric gets plans drawn.
Okay.
We're, we're working on design right now.
All right. Well, so, so your intent is not to build any apartments, that you're gonna be doing single-family, and I, I guess I was confused as to why you didn't just file for R1.
I don't know the answer to that question, but we are gonna do single-family homes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eric Holloway, 200 Casey Drive. R1 has limited, these, these are gonna be 50 by 105, which would be below the minimum lot size for R1, so this is consistent with what he, they might be a little larger than that, but it'll still be probably the lower, below the minimum, 7,000, I think, is the minimum lot size for, for R1, so we're, we're going just a little bit below that. It's kind of a more urban environment. We think it's more appropriate. He, it's the same as he's done on this current development. It's done very well. I don't know if you've been out there, but it's been very successful, and he's, he's, homes are 250 to 300,000 and have done really well.
I have no problem with single-family homes there. The thing I get concerned about is I know in the past, we've had folks come in and get some rezoning, saying they're gonna do something, and then they sit on it, and they sell to somebody else, and they develop apartments or something.
If I may, our plan currently, just to answer your question even better, I think, is to come in with the next planning cycle, which would be before you guys make your final vote with, with the development plan, so you'll actually see what he's, his development plan before that last city council meeting.
All right. Well, that provides me with some comfort. I appreciate it very much. Thank you for your time.
Okay, hold on just a second. We got one more question. Councilmember Scott?
Well, the great Karnak has read my mind and asked my questions.
All right, so I guess we have no other questions. Thanks.
Thanks.
Like I said, that will be on third reading at the next meeting. Let's see, our next one is, our next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 958. City Clerk, can you read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Marmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 958, and ordinance amending the Marmel zoning map and for other purposes.
This will also be on the third reading at the next scheduled meeting. Do we have any discussions or questions on this? Okay, so we'll move on to new business. We have resolution 2018-17, amending the 2018 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, can you read that by title only, please?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmel, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution 2018-17, a resolution to amend the 2018 Marmel general fund budget.
So we had the letter from Chief Williams on, on this, this request, but I've asked him to come before us and kind of give us an overview of what he's asking and, and why he's bringing it for, before us, and if we can do that right now, that'd be great.
Thank you. I'm Sam Williams. I'm your police chief here in Marmel. I'll try to be brief. What this is, is a request that if, I can take you back, three years ago, I came to the council and said that I would be asking for two additional personnel within the next couple of years. If you'll remember, we didn't ask last year because we were such a young department, and we were already training for rookies, and I just felt like that having six officers on the street with only four field training officers wouldn't serve the community of Marmel best. So I've held off. We, we now have those officers up, trained, and out, ready to go. And I, I wanna present, I'll try not to bog you down here, but I'm here tonight asking for the two officers that, again, for several years, I've been talking about, we were coming to increase the size of our department, which frankly, still keeps us behind. Just quickly, Sherwood, I've got some cities here with populations close to us. Sherwood's quite a bit larger, 30,000 people with 81 sworn personnel. Jacksonville, 28,000 with 70 sworn personnel. Bryant, 20,000 with 44 sworn personnel. Eldorado, Arkansas, 18,000 with 51 sworn personnel. Salem Springs, 16,000 with 41 sworn personnel. And Marmel, 18,000 with 36 sworn personnel. So we're behind, and we've known that, and we've been trying to make that, get that back to a ratio of officers per citizen that closely reflects the agencies around here, and agencies our size also. The one, my request as part of this is I am requesting that these two officers be sergeants instead of patrol officers, and obviously, the two patrol officers come up to increase our strength by two. That would be an actual increase in the budget of about $4,300, because the two officers that are currently number one and number two on the list are at topped-out pay positions, so there would not be a large increase to turn them, make them sergeants instead of patrol officers. I'm asking for two more sergeants, and, and the main reason is currently, we have two shifts that have a lieutenant assigned to it, is the shift commander. If that shift commander is sick, if he's taking vacation or taking leave or something happens, then the patrol shifts at night are left with a patrol officer as being in charge of the city. The highest-ranking officer on weekends and nights would be a patrol officer, and that is not a good environment for us. At this rate, if we, if I, if this is approved, we will have a sergeant on every shift, so if the lieutenant invariably, he will take off, inevitably, they'll take their time, we will have a trained supervisor on the squad instead of just a senior patrol officer acting in that capacity. They'll be trained in supervision techniques and all that goes along with that, with CJI, our own department, and UALR training these officers. So around the clock, we will have a supervisor on duty in the city, which we currently do not have. Again, the two officers, and again, we've been talking about that for several years, I need the people to, to make sure that we have plenty of staff in the patrol division in our department to protect the city.
Thank you, Chief. We've got several questions here. Councilmember Sanders, Saunders? How did I do that? My goodness. I've only known you for eight years.
Thank you, pro Tim mayor. Chief, you said the total cost of, of adding or promoting?
The total cost for promoting would be 4,000. The, the total cost for adding an officer is right at, I've got it in my list here. Yes, 109. 35,000 plus benefits of 19,000, that's per officer.
Okay.
Put a new officer on the street.
But we're promoting two officers in this case, or we're adding two officers?
Yes, sir. Promote two sergeants, and then add the two officers to, for the...
Both.
Yes, for both, but not two new sergeants positions and then two officers also, the two officers to replace the two sergeants.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
To keep our staffing level to an increase of two people.
Well, I understand your concerns about staffing. The first thing that comes to mind here is, and, and as you know, I've sat in a bunch of council meetings, I mean, budget meetings, about the last, say, three years, one of our hot topics of discussion is always police and fire salaries. Now, I, it seems to me that if we spend this money, if we approve this, it's gonna make it much more difficult, if not impossible, for us to continue the trend that we've had going, the trend being, we've tried to increase the salaries because we have been told that our uniformed personnel are not competitive, or the wages for them are not competitive with surrounding areas. So we've been trying to squeeze the money bucket all that we could to get a little bit more in there for them. Now, if we're spending more money on additional personnel and promoting existing personnel, then that bucket of money becomes smaller for us for at least the next one, if not two or three budget cycles, which means it's really decreasing our, our ability to continue to bring wage relief to you, or to raise the wages for the existing personnel. How do you, how can you comment to that? That's...
Well, first off, I think we're talking about two different situations. The people I'm asking for is, again, so we can more closely resemble what I feel like it needs, we need to keep Marmel safe and have enough officers on the street. I realize that costs money, and I realize it's a financial commitment from the city. As far as raises go, to be competitive, I think that is a second issue. I can tell you this, other than the additional two people, and again, I don't see that as part of the equation as to salaries. That's just a commitment that we have to make to have enough officers on the street to, to keep us safe. As far as the, the salary differential between the 4,000 from a sergeant to a patrolman, if you were talking about, and I just put this figure out in the air, if you were talking about a 3% pay increase for everybody on the department, it would be a $63,000 increase, which is not anywhere near what we're talking about on the increase from a sergeant, and also my secondary increase on a certificate pay. So I don't, I think, I don't think the wrestling match is, do we add more people and then not pay my officers? I think the wrestling match is, are we committed to adding more officers to the street? And my intention here today is to lay out a, a need, a real need. Again, we are behind, and we have been behind for several years, and I completely understand what you're saying about a finite amount of money, and if we use this money, then where is it made up? Or something out of the fact, but we're, we're behind, Mr. Saunders, and I'm trying to rectify that. I'm trying to get officers on the street, and certainly, I'm not gonna sit here and say, but the officers don't deserve a pay increase. You're not gonna hear that come, come out of my mouth and still be the police chief in it. So I hear, I understand what you're saying, but like I said, my request is for officers on the street and the supervision that they need in the times when a supervisor is not currently there.
Maybe I should restate the question a little bit here. My concern is, and we are financially in good shape in this city, because for years, we've worked hard to stay in good shape, so we budget closely, and we have, we're not a huge city, and we don't have, we have limited resources, of course. Now, by doing this, we're not just adding $4,000 to promote a sergeant, we're adding two more people, too.
Absolutely.
And that is, in our size budget, again, we only have so much money. How do we, how are we gonna spend it? So where is the priority? Is the priority this, or is the priority to try to continue to make the existing personnel's salaries more competitive with surrounding areas so we can draw in more personnel? I have been told in budget meeting that we have actually had civil service exam or exams where nobody showed up because our wages are just too low. And, and I'm questioning whether it's wise, whether it's a better decision to put more people on at a lower salary, or is it better to not put those people on and try to become more competitive? Because again, we only have so much money.
Yes, sir.
So where's our priorities?
Well, I would say if you're, we've got one officer for every 516 people in this city. The closest one is one for every 456 people and the farthest away is one for every 378 people. We're behind. We need officers and have. And like I said, I have been saying for three years that we would need to increase the size of the department. But also with that comes supervision. With, with an increase in the department, with the increase in needs of the department, with the increase in things that police officers do as far as responding to crime comes the need for more people. And with the need for more people comes the need for more supervision. I dare say there's not another police department in this state that has our size, that has 24 and 48 hour periods without a supervisor on duty. That's dangerous.
Have we compared in looking and, when you compare in contrast numbers like this, and this is just the engineer in me, another side of that coin that I would want to explore is what about our crime rate here? What about our incident rates for traffic stops and domestic violence and all those things that you all have to deal with? Do we compare with these other cities with our, call it crime rate?
We're low. We can have a low crime rate. Which is, there's several factors that go into that. But yes, sir, the, our location, our per capita income, our per capita education, your police department, a very well-trained, very well-supervised police department, well-staffed, well, that would be well-staffed, goes into that. And I would like to point out when you were saying, as we are recruiting for officers, Alderman Saunders, it's not just pay that officers look at. They also look at, are they supported? Are they backed up? Can they get off when they want to get off? All those things go into effect. When we're out recruiting people, one of the first questions asked is how many people you got on a shift? They want to know that they're going to be supported. They want to know they're going to be backed up and they're going to want to know that if they need vacation, they can take it. So it's not just pay, but yes, sir, we compare favorably with our crime rate and I'm trying to keep it that way. That's important to all of us.
Okay. Okay, I'll leave you alone.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I watched the video on this, on the last meeting and I, I remember the discussions differently than some folks here did from our last budget meeting. What I remember is that we were, in one of our last meetings, we were struggling with whether to do the fire department thing and allow some more hiring to go on there. But we were already, we already had a pretty good budget deficit running. And I remember Mark Kelly said something about, and it made the most sense at the time, he said, said, what we need is not just piecemeal changes and things, we need, we need to have every department come to us with a mission statement. What it is they're trying to do with their department, where they're going with it and what the resources are going to be to get there. And he said, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do a lot more hiring or anything like that until we've seen a mission statement. Do you all remember that?
I do.
Okay. And I agree with that. I thought that was great. And in fact, I even called Mark today and caught him down in Florida goofing off. He's retired now. And he pretty much remembers it the same way I did. Now, he, he said, now there's, he said, we may have said there's nothing that keeps him from coming in looking for more money mid-year, but he said, we really need to be organized about this. And so I object to the fact that you voted last week to do that with the fire department because, Chief, if I were you, I'd do the same thing. You probably went back to the police station and the officer said, you're not standing up for us. You need to come in there and get our share.
May I speak to?
Sure.
Yes.
And I don't mean that in a bad way.
No, sir, and I appreciate what you're saying.
I would do the same thing you're doing.
I would like to point out that when I came to the council and told them that I would be asking for two officers three years ago and another two officers within the next year, which is now last year, that was part of the five-year plan that I presented to the council. This is nothing new. Five years ago, I presented to this council saying that to keep this city safe, I would be asking for an increase in four people over the next two years, which has now turned into three and a half years. So yes, sir, I totally agree with you. I do under, I remember Mr. Kelly's statements about a five-year plan. I was comfortable with that because at Little Rock Police Department, we were oftentimes required to come up with five-year plans and I presented a five-year plan to the council that I talked about training buildings, training people and also an increase in officers or personnel.
My objection with this whole thing is we're doing mid-year budget changes. We've got, we've got a million dollars that we're running as a deficit this year. We don't need to be adding more, more personnel here mid-year. We've, we've made, what, 500,000 off of this tax election?
I wanted to speak to that.
Okay. And, and I know we've already spent some of that. We've hired a lot of people in the last couple of years. We hired 11 people for 2017. We hired two people for 2018. You can almost count on 50 or 60,000 so that one year we added 11, that's a half a million right there. And we haven't seen 2017 results. We don't know exactly how we came out on that. So, so I think John Vampir San was correct in voting no the other night. You had a very good moment of clarity. And, and I was with you. I was jumping up and down when I was watching that video.
I just want that to be on record on the video so that when I come back and I show my grandchildren that...
There you go.
Steve Mosley said, I had a moment of clarity, a moment.
I'm hoping those moments continue.
Thank you.
Anyway, anyway, I would actually like to make a motion to rescind that vote from the last meeting on the fire department. Is that possible to do, City Attorney Norris?
The council can overturn a resolution with another resolution. And then if you'll give me a minute, there is a process for withdrawing prior resolutions.
While he's doing that, I'd like to let Councilmember Scott talk. Councilmember Scott?
I don't think there is anyone on the council who is more supportive of police and fire than I am. As supportive indeed, but more supportive, I don't think so. And I believe that our department heads know what they're doing. You know, you've laid out a plan, you're trying to execute your plan. The timing isn't the best in the world, but let's look at some numbers. One is that conservatively, and we need to be conservative, the increase in sales tax should bring us revenue of around $400,000. The fire department was allocated $86,720 at the last council meeting for one new head count and the stipend for paramedics. The police are looking for $109,567 on this request. That would leave us with no additional hires and no additional recurring spending, about $203,713 if we get $400,000 of revenue on the sales tax increase. If, you know, that's always a big if. That leaves, if we approve these tonight and we approve those at the last meeting, that leaves us about enough money to give a 3.5% raise with the remaining funds for all of the remaining personnel to bring us closer to parity. Now, 3.5 was not my dream. You know, I fought hard for that sales tax increase so that we could boost them pretty well with that money, but we're winnowing it away. If the need is there, I'm for it. I just think we need to know out front that this is going to be the result of our vote tonight, that at budget time when we sit down, we're looking at 3.5% max, not 5%, not 6%, but 3.5% to get our uniformed personnel up to parity. But Chief, my opinion is, if you have done the analysis and you feel you need that to keep us safe, then I will support you and just know that at budget time, we're going to be squeezing again. I was hoping we wouldn't, but we would understand.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Holt, we'll hold on just a second and let the city attorney speak to Mr. Mosley. Thank you.
So Malmel, City Code Section 2-90 deals with reconsiderations of motions or ordinances. Any member of the majority may request at this meeting a motion for reconsideration. And so a member of the majority would be anyone who voted for the resolution, I believe it was 2018-16, is able to make a motion at that time or at this meeting to reconsider that prior resolution.
So I'm assuming that rules me out. Is that correct since I was not here?
Well, you were not a member of the majority, which would be those who voted yes. So it'd have to be someone who voted yes on that resolu, so if memory serves anyone but you and...
Clarity.
Councilmember Vapir San.
Clarity. All right. At this moment, I'll recognize Councilmember Holt.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim. At that meeting, I told the chief, you know, this came in like a jack in the box, as things always do. We get these things and we're supposed to vote on it right now. We can't put it off. We can't discuss it. We got to vote on it right now. And that was $38,000. And I told him then, back in the, in a budget meeting, as both department heads came before us and the chief had his issues and you had both, and I reviewed it then and I said, you know, I'm really on the rail here. I can't see doing this for this department and now all of it that I didn't know was going to come and now I need to do something for the other department and then to say no. There's something wrong with my managerial concept here, you know, in my, in my own mind. We just passed a little tax thing that everybody, oh, it's the grandest thing since peanut butter and we, it's approximately 62% increase from $750,000 a year we bring in, now it's going to be approximately $181 million if I remember the numbers right.
One point.
No.
1.8.
1. what?
1.8 million.
It could be as...
A 1.8 million, okay. It's still an increase. And it, and the wording says that it is far but not limited to the police and fire department. It's for public safety and for the police and fire department, but not limited to them. So here we are, we've passed it and now we're scrambling to say, oh, boy, you know, this is really tough. Well, I thought that's what we were passing it for. And we're not going to start collecting the money until a little further down the way. And I believe as to what the Alderman said a few minutes ago, that our department heads pretty well know what they're doing. And I believe with all my heart and soul in Chief Williams that there's not a frivolous bone in his body. And if he didn't need this, he would not be standing here pretending that he needed it and it's not just because somebody else got something, well, I want something. There is a genuine need. And those of us who were at the municipal league, we can testify that we earned every penny of our parking meter time, but they talked about the increase in opioid issues that we have and the crime and it was a, it was a tremendously beneficial item that we as council members in our cities throughout the state need to know about. So we have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens, but we also, in that responsibility is to see to it they are taken care of by the people who are charged with that responsibility. So if we go along and recall what we did in the last session, which I thought was a very impromptu with not giving the council time to think about it, that would be fine if we turned both of them down. But if we're going to keep that one, it is absolutely, I beg this council, we will work it out somehow or another, whatever we have to do, but this has got to be done for those officers who have their lives. We see too many officers out there getting shot and putting their lines on, lives on the, online and I would not be able to live with myself if we didn't pass it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At the last council meeting, which actually that was 2018-16 that we passed for the general resolution, general budget resolution, I had made a point to say that we need to make sure that we remember these two departments as, they're two most very important departments of our city, but we need to remember them separately. And that it's not a, just because one or another gets one thing or another, that's, that's not how we need to view this. We need to view this as our department heads that are running these programs day to day, they know the needs that they need now, they know the needs that they're going to need in five, hopefully 10 years down the road. And if they're coming before us and asking for these things, it's something that is a need and not a want. During those budget meetings, that's when they're going to, we ask all department heads to come before us and ask for the things that they want or the things that they would like to have to make our, our community safe and fun to live in. But I think if we're getting these requests from, if it's from fire and it's from Public Works, if we're getting these requests, it's because they've thought this process through and thought that this is something that they need immediately. So I have to look at it as, yes, we are taking a big piece out of a pie that we haven't even collected yet, but it's something that's important to our city. These are the two most important departments in our city. So I would be in favor of that too as we go forward. We have another question. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, back to my train.
Yes, sir.
The, I would be, I would definitely vote to recall whatever the term was. If you would like to make that motion, I would certainly vote for it. Because I think, I think we need as a council to do a better job of planning. Let's, let's look at this kind of stuff at budget time, consider everything and not just be reactionary. I mean, that was a reactionary thing the other night. And, and this is a continuation. Public Works comes under the heading of public safety also, certain parts of it do. They may be in here next meeting looking for money too. So I think what would be nice is go back, clean the slate, have all this done at budget time and look at it, look at her, Marion can get her numbers together and figure out, make a proposal how we ought to divvy it up among the departments and let the department heads figure out what they want to do with the money. So, I mean, unfortunately, I'm a no vote. I effectively voted no last time and I just, I, it goes back to my thing is, is we don't need to do what I call budget busting in the middle of the fiscal cycle, especially if we're already spending negatively for the year. So that's, that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Vapir San?
Want to kind of address a few things here real quick. My no vote last week was, by the way, I would be thrilled to work for either of our chiefs. You are not going to find a finer police chief or a finer fire chief than what we have here in this city.
I don't disagree.
The experience and the way that they keep their departments and fight for their uniformed personnel is, I would work for them at a heartbeat. If Chief Williams had come before us a month ago and beat Chief Ezel, I would have no voted But because we opened the door last week, I can't no vote tonight. And let me, let me just address a few things. The issue last week that was stated in the letter by Chief Ezel was because we don't have fires, we need training. So for us to say because we don't have crime, we don't need training or personnel, it's not following. A lot of good questions tonight, none of which were asked last week. None. So I take umbrance in the fact that I think budgets like this are bargaining chips. And Ms. Marion knows exactly in what she was saying because when, when they come to us, what we did, what happened two weeks ago when the vote passed, we got off of what we had vowed to do. We said, we are going to say, here's the money, we're not going to micromanage, you figure out what you want to do with your department. We didn't... We didn't do that two weeks ago. So, when we pulled away from that decision, every department has the right to come before us now and say, hey, the door's open. But what... If we open the door like we did two weeks ago, then when bargain... When budget session comes along, the bargaining chips are gone. They're gone. And I know these men, I know our department heads, they want what's best for our city, they want what's best for their department. So, we have to make wise decisions, but I can't say... We can't... And this is all my opinion, by the way, and you know that. We can't say yes to one and no to another. Like I said, if he'd come before Chief Ezel, I would've no voted him. And if we'd have yesed him, and Chief Ezel would've come behind him and said, we need this, I would've yesed Ezel. I love our uniformed personnel. They are my friends, and they are a blessing to the city and to me personally. So, I want us to be cognizant of the fact, yes, they are separate, as Pro Tem Anderson said, but their needs are not that much different than one another as our city continues to grow. And we've got another thirteen acres we're putting in, homes over here, and then with the thousand homes that are going in at the south end of town, we're gonna continue to grow. So, I just wanted to state where I was at with the situation, and I am a hundred percent for both of our departments. I thought, two weeks ago, my no vote was just, I thought, hey, let's wait till budget. But because that one stands, I have to back our other department. It's just something that I think is of necessity, that I do, that I feel that I should do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vapurzian. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Pro Tem. Well, this ain't gonna be like me, but I'm gonna do it anyway. In the interest of clearing this issue up, I think Councilmember Mosley has stated a good point. And I think Alderman Vapurzian has, too. So, what I'm going to do, just to clear this issue up right now about the Fire Department, I'm gonna make a motion that we rescind our vote from last meeting.
So, we have a motion. Councilmember Timmons, you have your light on. Did you wanna make a discussion?
I think we opened the door in the budget meetings when we told these guys to come back in July and ask, because we knew that the tax was coming up. And we would... We were gonna see if we would be able to do that. Both of these are needs, not wants, for these guys. And that was my train of thought last time, that we... Because I remember the conversation, and we told them to come back in July. If we had known... If we had known what we know now, what we have said that, you know, why tell them... Why give them hope? And, yeah, we're gonna get the money, but, you know, and that's what it's for, but we don't think we can give it to you now. That's just my train of thought.
Thank you, Councilmember Timmons. So, we have a motion to rescind 2018-16. We have two more lights. Is that on discussion on the motion or on the...
No, no comment.
Okay. Councilmember Holt?
I've almost lost my train of thought. You know, it would be very awkward. We don't know what promises or commitments that Chief Ezel has made. Now that we passed that, it's two weeks later, and if he has to go back and backtrack on something that we have voted for, it... I'll leave it to our city attorney to weed that out.
So, I have spoke with Chief Ezel, who said they will have to rescind at least one offer that has already been made.
So, I would be open to hear a discussion about...
Are we open to lawsuit because of that?
To be... My favorite line is, you can be sued by anyone for anything, legitimate or not. So, yes, we're open to lawsuit for that, but I don't... I feel pretty good about the city's position in a case like that. Is that lawyerly enough of an answer?
Well done.
So, we still have a motion without a second. We do have another light. Councilmember Mosley?
Can I second that motion?
I knew that was the question that was coming. Our ordinance is silent on it, as is Roberts' Rules of Order, silent on that. So, absent something saying that you couldn't, I don't see why you can't.
Yeah, hereby second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second to rescind Resolution 2018-16, or not rescind it...
Reconsider.
Reconsider, sorry. Reconsider. Do we have any discussion on that? All in favors?
I know...
Councilmember Saunders?
I made the motion, but I want this clear because the words I just heard. What we are voting on right now is whether we're gonna put it back on the table and vote for it again. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we're not voting on rescinding it, we're voting on putting it back on the table.
Well, effectively, what it does is it withdraws the prior approval, and then it's back on the table for discussion to be voted on again.
Okay. Okay. That's all. I just wanted to clarify.
So, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's to reconsider. The motion is to reconsider 2018-16. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, again, you and I both heard it differently or understood it differently. The... Understood, our meeting at budget time was to ask for more information, bring it back at next budget meeting. They can always come in, but I don't think we voted to encourage them to come back in. There may have been one or two Aldermen that did. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it wasn't a consensus?
Yes, sir, it was. Oh, I don't know about consensus, but we were asked to come back in July. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't remember voting on that, but anyway.
There was no vote. It was just... It wasn't a vote. We just said, come back in July.
Yeah. So, I mean, I wouldn't have agreed with that. So, I mean, we were voting at the time, I would've said no, you know? But anyway, go ahead and proceed.
So, we have a motion and a second. No more discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
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 It appears as though there may be some confusion as to what the motion was.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We have a motion to reconsider 2018-16 was the motion.
Okay.
Shall I do the count again?
I think that's appropriate.
All in favor for reconsidering 2018-16, say yes.
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 All opposed, say no.
No.
No. The noes habit. So, now...
I make a motion to pass Resolution 2018-17?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass Resolution 2018-17. Do we have any more discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor Johnson told me, years and years ago, he was over salesman, and he told me years and years ago, when you get your sale, get out, which I almost wanna do, but I also wanna say something. I realize, and Terry reminds me oftentimes, that sometimes I speak emotionally and quickly and from my heart, and sometimes that comes across as crass and maybe even rude. And I apologize if I've ever done that to anybody in this council, and I want you all to know.
And that's your time.
And I turned it off, Terry. I promise I didn't. I appreciate what you've done tonight, and I know that none of y'all... I don't ever doubt any of your commitment to public safety, and I hope that you never feel like that I would come at you with something that I didn't feel like was in the best interest of the city, because I know y'all's votes are what y'all feel like are in the best interest of the city. And this, obviously, if you've read the packet, I've still got a certificate pay issue I wanna talk to y'all about. This was a big hurdle for me. This was important to me and my people. I appreciate your consideration. I appreciate your comments. And like I said, thank you for allowing me to come up here and try to stagger my way through a plan for a police department in a city that I dearly love.
Thank you, Chief. City Attorney Norris?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, just so that everyone's crystal clear. There's two things, what's that? One is the resolution that was just passed. There's also an issue about the certificate pay. I was out of the office last week, so I wasn't able to do some of the research. There's questions as to whether something like that could be done by resolution or needs to be done by an ordinance. Chief, I apologize, I was out of the office and didn't get to look into it. So, that will be coming back at the next meeting. And I know in discussions with Chief Williams, he was a little bit concerned that he didn't want people to think that he was asking for one thing at one meeting, getting an approval, and then coming back for the next meeting. It was all one, and try as I might, I couldn't do the research I needed to do in time, so I apologize for that. But just know you'll see some at the next meeting.
I was trying to stay away from Mr. Mosley. You're piecemealing this.
Which is out of your control.
I really was, trying to make sure. I wanted all my cards on the table on this one. This is what I'm asking for.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all very much.
Councilmember Saunders, I think he's got something else.
Yes. Thank you, Pro Tem.
He's got something for you, Chief, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One, I kinda beat you up, and I feel bad, 'cause I know you do a great job. You and Chief Ezel are just great for this city. And I've said it a thousand times, I've said it in budget meeting, I pounded the table on this. No matter what we do, the number-one job we've got is public safety, and public safety is spearheaded by our police and our fire. So, I've always been on y'all's side. But if you've heard anything here that maybe makes you think that we think that you're doing this because Chief Ezel got something, I don't believe that for a minute. I know you better than that. I don't think you would've came here if you didn't need it. That's why I voted for it. But, so, thank you.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
I thank Jesus, and I don't have to leave here and say, not only did I like it, what I wanted.
Take his back. I guarantee you, he's standing out there, too.
I was looking for an exit, other than this.
He's like, oh, my gosh, what's happening?
All right. So, that is... That concludes our new business for this evening. We move on to Mayor's comments. Mayor wanted me to remind everybody that Fourth Fest activities are coming up. The schedule of events is in our packet, in the council packet, and is probably pretty well-publicized. I know a lot of other cities, people that live in other cities come to our Fourth Fest because it's so awesome, so we are awesome.
We are awesome.
We are awesome.
We are awesome.
The next one... The next order of business is Planning Commission report, and who...
It'll be after.
That's... Yeah, oh, yeah, that's the next, after the next meeting.
That was canceled, wasn't it?
It was canceled.
Yeah, next one canceled.
Oh, it says it right here in the vote.
Oh, okay.
Further down, I'll tell you guys later.
I'll go to that one.
Right. Everybody's wanting that one. So, the next one is, do we have any council member comments? Councilmember Mosley?
We got an Oversight Committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 in these council chambers.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Vapurzian?
Thursday evening, right here, we have our Annexation Committee meeting, and all are welcome.
What time?
That's a great question.
Six.
Six, yeah. My secretary just said six. Thank you. I'm gonna get in trouble for that one.
Yeah, you are. You're in trouble.
Okay, I'll bring you a cookie. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Holt?
Be brief, thank you very much. I mentioned a while ago about the Arkansas Municipal League. I assure you, it's something more than just to go to and hang around. They put you through the mill. We had tremendous workshops. They talked about in the Police Department that they... All policemen should be trained to be emergency intervention for people who are... Have a mental problem. They're not a criminal, but it's a mental, and they know how to handle that and interview it and know what to do, so I assume the chief is on that. They also... One of the workshops just happened to be on annexation. And they... I have the name of the man that gave the big speech and said, before you do anything, you have to go through them. I said, well, interesting to find out about that. But anyway, annexation was one of the conversations at the workshops that they had, and I thought, well, I wish our crew was here, because it was really, really a detailed thing. So, a number of things that we can learn about what other cities in Arkansas are doing. The instructors are absolutely the very best that you can find, cream of the crop. And it's a learning, but it was exhausting, and I was ever so pleased to finally get home. But I encourage everybody to go when they can.
Thank you, council member. Do we have any other discussion from council member? City Attorney?
I have probably the best announcement to share. I know most of y'all know, but my wife, Ash, and I welcomed a newborn baby. Joshua Locke Norris for John Locke? Oh, I'm sorry. Mohawk Warrior. So, my older son insists on calling him that, as recently as today, but him, mom, and everyone's doing fine, so just wanted to share that with y'all. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, City Attorney Norris. City... Madam City Clerk, do you have any comments?
I have a brief comment. I have thanked everyone who participated before, but I wanted to thank you guys again at the Arkansas Municipal League, the City of Mammell during the Arkansas Clerk, Court of Treasurer Association session of that conference. We were recognized as having the highest attended workshop in the entire state of Arkansas, and so I just wanted to thank all the department heads, the chamber, staff, everyone who was involved, who contributed to the success of that workshop. So, thank you, guys. We did a really good job.
Yeah, congratulations. Me, too. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is, for your information, building permits and the report for building permits is attached to our council packet and just for your review. Also, the Planning Commission in June has been canceled. We all figured that out earlier. And that's the... All the business that I have. I make a motion that we...
Dismissed, so offered.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to dismiss. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
All right.
I do, I win.
She took the old Price is Right strategy and just going one...